Alrighty, I would like to call to order the Silver Lake Regional Schools meeting, meeting of May 11th, and we are being recorded by Area 58. Thank you very much. We're going to begin tonight with a couple of student presentations. The first being the Beauty and the Beast presentation from the middle school students. And I don't know if anybody wants to do a further introduction other than that? Um, we could, oh, here he is.
He's here.
Oh, Jim. Are we all set for the Beauty and the Beast presentation?
We absolutely are. They're ready to launch, they're ready now. They're excited to come in.
Excellent.
You guys ready?
We're ready. Very ready. Thank you.
(inaudible) Yeah. Hmm? Yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Hi. Thank you for having us. I brought with you, what is your name? I mean, I have to... We have brought your entertainment tonight, Silver Lake Regional Middle School. And who is presenting next weekend, Beauty and the Beast. It's been working very hard since January to present this show, it's very exciting, and if I must say so myself, they are very good. And we'd like to say that this is our 25th show here at the middle school as a club, and it's also the 25th anniversary of the show Beauty and the Beast.
Oh.
So we kind of thought that was appropriate. So if you would like to sit back and relax, Mr. Murphy?
Did you introduce yourself? That's Nurse Beth Carroll, our director. She's wonderful. And I'm Dave Murphy, I'm the technical director. I've been with her since the beginning too. I was a sophomore when we started, and I'm still here. So we have, in this great cast, we have 60 kids in our cast, we have 20 kids on our crew. The set we made this year is beautiful, you're really gonna love it. We have high school mentors, parents, and community members coming in to help. It's a great effort, and we're really happy that you have us here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So sit back, relax, enjoy, and, um, I would say, be our guest.
(speaking Spanish) It is with deepest pride and greatest pleasure that we welcome you tonight. And now, we invite you to relax. Let us pull up a chair, as the dining room proudly presents... Your dinner. Be our guest, be our guest. Put our service to the test, tie a napkin round your neck, Cheyenne Will provides the rest. Soukoujou, hatodzo, we only live to serve. Try the Gresta, it's delicious! Don't believe me, ask the dishes, they can see, they can tell. After breakfast, it's France, and a dinner here is not a second class. Go on and board your menu, take a glance, and then you'll be our guest, we our guest, be our guest.
(singing) Eat frango, cheese souffle, I am putting on flambé.
We'll prepare and serve with flair and culinary. Cabaret, you're alone and you're scared, but the baked goods are prepared. No one's complaining, was a flat was entertaining.
We tell jokes.
I do tricks with my fellow candlesticks.
And it's all imperfect, just as you can bet. Come on and let your glass, you want your own free pass to be our guest.
If you're stressed, it's fine dining, we suggest.
Be our guest, be our guest, be our guest.
It's a guest, it's a guest, sings a libra, be blessed. Horns and parting faith, oh lord, I'll have a napkin's fresh, say rest. With dessert, (singing) and I can see how that's swaddled. While the cups are there, stop chewing, I'll be bubbling, I'll be brewing, I'll get warm.
(singing) We want the company of friends. We've got a lot to do.
Who isn't one lump or two, for your guest?
She's our guest.
She's our guest.
She's our guest, be our guest, be our guest, be our guest. Be our guest, be our guest. Our command is your request. It's been years since we had anybody here, and we're obsessed. With your will, with your peace, yes indeed, we aim to please. While the candlelight's still glowing, let us hope you will keep going. Course by course, one by one, till you shout, enough undone. Then we'll sing you off to sleep and to digest. To mention, rock your feet up, but for now, let's heat up, be our guest. Be our guest, be our guest, please be our guest.
Thank you, you're awesome. They've also been here taking four hours, like, at their end, so...
That was fantastic. I can't wait. Wow!
And if you'd like to take it, I know someone who's probably that one, so if you'd like to just email me, and if you think something is important, glad to have you. Thank you so much.
And when is it again?
It is next Saturday, 7 o'clock, and Sunday at 2:00.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye, everybody.
Thank you, guys. (applause) Oh, really? Wow, that was... Okay. Next is student presentation by senior Derek Garland.
Thank you.
(inaudible) So, hi, I'm Mr. Shute. of our Tech Ed offerings. And Derek took civil engineering architecture last year, liked it, enjoyed it. He's also a very independent and conscientious student. So him and I talked, and we decided to do an independent study where he could further explore architecture, and this is one of his projects.
Do we need to cut the lights right now?
I can see it's...
Derek, you want me to do the slides? Yeah. Thank you. Hi, my name's Derek. Sorry that took so long, I was just getting set up. I'm a senior at Silver Lake, and I did, as Shute said, an elementary school design project over the past semester or so, I would say. So as Shute said, last year I took CTE with him, civil engineering and architecture. I enjoyed the course, I wanted to continue it more. So this year I signed up for an independent study with him, and after a few projects smaller earlier in the year, I decided on this project around holiday break. So why this project? As I said, I had to decide on a new project. This project was unique in that it gave me the opportunity to speak to people with experience in the field, like Mr. Glass and Ms. Pruitt. I had never done a building this big, so it was a new challenge, and so to say, I guess I have 13 years of experience with schools because that's kind of all I've done since I was five. So my process, the first thing I did was I compiled a list of everything that I believe should be included in an elementary school. And right after that, I came up with a questionnaire. I wanted to get some opinions, and this is on stuff like the inclusion of computer labs, how to go about safety, and how to go about traffic, and other things along the nature. So after I compiled the questionnaire, I met with some of the faculty here, I met with Mr. Glass and Ms. Pruitt, as I said. And after getting some of their input, I began to work on a preliminary design. After working on the design for a while, I went and met with the principal of Dennett Elementary, Mr. Benito, and the principal of Halifax Elementary, Mr. Bowdre, and changed a few of my designs based on some of their suggestions. So going back to the questionnaire, what I really wanted to accomplish with this was to make sure that what I thought was right was right, and what I was doing made sense. So the meetings that I had with Mr. Glass and Ms. Pruitt provided a lot of useful information that I never would have thought of, and more importantly, they approved a lot of what I believed were just, from what I didn't have really any experience, but I just figured for common sense, we're wrong. So I took a lot of their ideas, built off of them, and made them the centerpiece of my design. For example, Mr. Glass suggested that a courtyard isn't always a great idea, so I tried to build a design that avoided using a courtyard. I later changed that because Mr. Bowdre suggested that a single floor elementary school could be beneficial. But a lot of that happened where I had to decide on which design points I wanted to focus on and which I wanted to change. So some examples of the questionnaire, as I said, Mr. Glass voiced his opinions that courtyards weren't necessarily a great idea, and they can be a distraction to the students if there's other students out there, as well as they can be hard to maintain, it can be hard to get mowing equipment and other greenskeeping objects out there. Ms. Pruitt gave her opinions that the need for community areas such as auditoriums were really important for getting parents involved in the student's education. As it went along, I realized some of the opinions I was getting were kind of conflicting, and I had to make hard decisions based on what I'd heard. So some of the project results, as a lot of you guys have in front of you, I have the packet with all the buildings. And I built an operating model of a school. I was able to incorporate a lot of the ideas I'd heard too, obviously not all of them, but I feel like it was very valuable to be able to incorporate as much as I could of other people's opinions, like a real world environment. And here's a large-scale copy of the floor plan. As you can see, the floors, on the left side of the school is the younger grades. Can you just go back for a second? Yeah. On the left side of the school, there's a lot of tables, as you might be able to see. I know it's a little blurry. The tables I decided on for younger grades were better, just because of the ability to collaborate easier. Not that collaboration is important at higher grade levels, it's just more, I feel like they're more flexible for the younger grade levels. And so here's the breakdown of the school. Every color has a different grade level. For example, yellow is the kindergarten, the integrated pre-K is green, and it just kind of shows the layout of the school based on classrooms. That's it for my presentation. If anyone has any questions, they feel free to ask.
Derek, did you have a plot of land in mind when you... A size of a land, not an actual plot, I don't want anybody to get into that.
Oh, God.
Did you have a certain amount of acreage you had in mind, or...
So I, basically, what I decided to do was to take the design of Kingston Elementary, I know it's not an elementary school, it's an elementary and intermediate school, and pretend that I had that space to work with.
Okay.
As if Kingston were one of the school districts that were divided into two. So this would be rather like a Kingston, say, south, and there'd be another Kingston, north.
Oh, great. Thank you.
How many students did you think would be able to be accommodated?
So I looked up on the Kingston Elementary School, or Kingston Intermediate website, and I realized that there are somewhere between seven to eight teachers per grade, which probably houses about 20 students. So assuming that's half, that's about four classrooms per grade. So I decided to add a fifth, just because you never know with fluctuating numbers, and it's better to have extra class space than not be able to fit the students you have in.
Derek, what kind of other kinds of learning spaces do you have in there besides sort of the traditional classrooms?
See the, like, royal blue at the top right? The building right there, I mean, the building, the room right there is actually a STEM room, it has a lot of STEM equipment for, like, newer technology learning. It has, like, the circular tables, I can't really point that high. Tall, not that tall. But, yeah, and there's a lot of, like, this room in the front, right near the open space, I know it's hard to see, with, kind of, it kind of looks like a sparkle floor, that's kind of like a group collaboration area, it's a larger, like, multipurpose space.
Derek, is this the first time you've done an independent study?
It actually is, yes. And I feel like it went pretty well.
Wonderful. This must be one of your passions, are you going on to further your education?
Yeah, I am going to UMass Empress next year. I'm not sure, I think if I were to do it again, I'm not really a design person, I think I might take the civil engineering aspect, more of the, like, building and, like, what the structure has to be able to sustain.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Derek, how big's the auditorium?
Pretty big. I don't know the exact square footage, but I'd guess somewhere around, like, 50 by 60.
How many does it seat?
I...
Good job.
Great job.
Wonderful. Thank you, Derek.
Again, this is, I just want to interject a little bit, this is an independent study, we talked about that, and I go over class sizes and everything, all of our offerings. We have about 40 independent studies going on this year, and this is just a glimpse. You know, Derek put a ton of energy and work into this, and, you know, the time he spent outside of even school, I know he skipped some time during the independent study period to talk to assistant superintendent, talk to our CTE director who has experience, elementary level as well, kind of, building projects. So this was a lot of, a lot of hard work, a lot of great work, and this is, you know, this is a good, a great example of our pre-engineering and engineering course, it's hard at work, and this is some of the result that you get out of that. You know, Derek's, he had a great opportunity with this, he put a lot of hard work, and I give a lot of credit to Mr. Shute for spending some of his, some great time with Derek and kind of collaborating and building this project up. They were more than eager to present tonight because they really want to show off some of the great work that's done, so we're very proud of Derek and this project, so great job again, Derek.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just add, one of the things that you said during your presentation was that a lot of your input and opinions were conflicting, and I would give you some advice, having somebody who's worked in technology for a long time, when you gather requirements and you're talking to people, you're gonna get a lot of different conflicting opinions, and picking the right person to listen to is the political part of whatever field you go into. So good luck, and that's gonna be your biggest challenge.
And you did a good job listening to me, thank you.
(laughter) Right to last, Thomas Devoca.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'm just gonna give a moment to collect ourselves. You know, the other thing I would say is, just a personal sort of comment to, you know, some of these subjects that we offer to the students, and they're so important, we continue to offer because it sparks passion like that in the extra effort, and it's wonderful, you want to make sure that you have that kind of offering.
Sure. I shared with you in our, the last month, about the students that built the underwater robot.
Yes, yes.
That's kind of my kind of study.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to add the interpersonal skills that Derek had when he was interviewing myself, and were really impressive as well, and I know that Mr. Shute kind of helped guide him through that, and also, you know, those skills are so important in the workplace today, and his ability to communicate with adults that he didn't necessarily know was extremely impressive. Also, his follow-up with emails, asking for the questions when he needed clarification, I just was very impressed. So thank you for asking me to be a part of it. Great. Wonderful. Thank you. If the committee is okay, we'd like to take a couple more things out of order. Next is, we have the pleasure of having the CTE Student of the Year with us this evening. So I hand that over to Elliot, please.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. We have a couple things to talk about and present to you quickly tonight. To start off, really with the big one for us, we have a student every year that we get to recognize as a senior who represents the best of everything that happens in career and Tech Ed at the high school. And so Caroline Vogt was chosen as Silver Lake's representative to go to the state banquet and be recognized by our State Association, MAVA, the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators. At Mechanics Hall in Worcester a few weeks ago, we had a lovely dinner with Caroline's family and her teachers. There were students from all across the Commonwealth there to be recognized, and Caroline was right up there as the best of the best graduating from our schools. And so I'm gonna read to you quick what we shared with everybody about Caroline. Caroline, as a resident of Halifax, and her folks are back there, daughter of Susan and Arthur Vogt, is a student who has excelled in early education and care. She's been working as a student-teacher in the Silver Lake preschool, and each day demonstrates professionalism and preparation and sincere dedication to our children. She's dedicated to her academic studies, maintains a GPA of over 3.7, and is a member of the National Honor Society. Carolyn has been a member of the soccer and track teams, and has received school awards and perfect attendance, honor roll, athlete scholar, and CTE Student of the Month. Outside of school, Caroline maintains a part-time job, volunteers for the youth soccer program, and has served as a Sunday school teacher. Caroline, next year, is going to Roger Williams University to study in the field of early education. We're super proud of this kid, if we can give a round of applause. (applause) High five from the press room. Actually, I'm gonna pass the floor to Caroline for just a few words to say.
So thank you for having me here tonight, and it's been a great honor of being named Silver Lake CTE Student of the Year. I am proudly represented at our school last year at the ceremony in Worcester. When entering into Silver Lake, I was very excited to be accepted into the CTE program. I was not sure what I wanted to pursue, but once I completed my rotation in elementary education and care, I knew it was right for me. Ms. Barbara, Ms. Crystal, and Ms. Kirsten are amazing teachers and mentors. I'll never forget the wonderful experience I had over the past four years. I was able to realize my love for teaching for young children, and because of that, I'll be attending Roger Williams next year to study for fall elementary education.
Congratulations.
(applause) Thank you for being here, and Caroline's teacher, Barbara Pimental, Ms. Barbara that runs the Silver Lake preschool. All right, so that's always one of the kind of fun parts in the year, to be able to recognize our best kids, so I'm glad you could make it tonight. I'm gonna jump to the next part of our piece here, and so we have the opportunity to do this once a year, and so if you're new on the school committee, my quick intro is, we have the responsibility and the luxury of working with folks who represent our trade areas and programs in the community. It's a responsibility of ours in vocational education to have advisory committees. Those are folks who represent business and industry, and all of the career paths and different ways that our kids are studying. And so we meet with them a few times a year, they're a great resource to us, they employ our kids, they share ideas, they share trends going on, they talk about all kinds of things with us, they validate our equipment over the course of the year in some cases. So they are gonna quickly each introduce themselves, and, you know, we might stray off of our own bullet points here, but just for them to have a minute with you each to share some of their discussion over the course of the year, that's kind of the opportunity. Sometimes, you know, I say going back over the last 10 years that I've been here, we've done a little seed planting when it's come to equipment needs and that kind of thing, and we've done a good job in that area, and so there's less of that, and there's more discussion around student employment and some other areas, I think, tonight, so. So our first guest, Alex.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Alex Masfield, I'm with the Geology and Ecology Program Director there. I've been on the horticulture, so I'm representing the horticulture program tonight. I've been on the Horticulture Advisory Committee, I think, for about eight years, maybe even a little bit more. It's the first time I've come in front of the school board. My other colleagues on our Horticulture Advisory have always taken that up, so I'm long overdue for doing my part. Before I forget and jump into talking about the program, the Horticulture Program's FFA plant sale is on now. It's open to the public tomorrow and Saturday. Mother's Day is Sunday, so get your plants. If you've done that before, you know they do a great job in the greenhouse there, and so I think that's open in the back, but at the greenhouse, if you want to stop in, yeah. So like Elliot said, I think it's true for most of the CTE, the Horticulture Program's in really good position this year, really doing well, I know, over the... Program's in really good position this year, really doing well. I know over the course of the year, a lot of the discussion has always been about, you know, equipment needs and kind of filling that, and it's been sort of a hindrance to the program at times, trying to figure out the right equipment and capitalizing on that. And it seems like right now, really, everything is dialed in, the equipment that they have, and that's, you know, a testament to you guys who approved budgets for that and everything. So, the equipment that they have is really suitable for the kids. They're really able to work with it. Some in the past, some have been a little too dangerous, a little too big, a little too old, and it's been really dialed in. And so, it's allowed the program to kind of transition from figuring out what they need for equipment to really focusing on, you know, what the marketplace skills is for, for, you know, for, for skill sets in business. And the other thing that's, that's really well placed about the program right now is, is the staff that have. Glenn, who's been in the program for, for quite a while, has agriculture and turf management background. Now Ethan, new, new teacher this year, first year.
First year.
You know, brings an arborist and forestry perspective. He also went to high school at one of the big ag schools in Western Mass, went to college at a big ag college. And so, you know, they're both kind of real role models for, for what the kids can do as they go on. And so, now they're really doing that focus on, you know, the need for skilled labor. And I think probably the best example of that over the past few years is their, their beach grass nursery program that you may probably have heard about. It's something we've developed over a pretty long time, but right now, it's really on the upswing. If you drive around the campus at all, you, you may or may not know, but if you look, some of the islands are actually a beach grass nursery. They look great, but they're actually a profitable business that the Horticulture Program is running. And that was something that's developed over quite a while where they, you know, we identified the need first, icebreaker beach, planting beach grass every year after nor'easters. And it's really expensive to get the stuff. There's really limited supply, and with sea level rise and coastal storms and all that stuff, it's a bigger and bigger need up and down the coast, and the program is really talking to them on that. Started growing this stuff for them in collaboration with them, and selling it to them and planting it out there. And it's been really a great example of not just the sort of skill building in terms of, you know, how do you plant a plant and grow it up in a nursery, but how do you identify, you know, a business market sector that, that has a, a real deficit in supply? And, you know, how do you make that, fulfill that demand? And so, I, you know, personally think that there's, there's really no end to the, the demand on that. I could see kids coming out of this program and, and starting up a business to do that even. So, that, you know, that's been really impressive. And, you know, the rest of their nursery program, that mostly takes place outside. Beach grass is suited to outdoor nursery. The rest of their program takes place in the greenhouse, and they've made some really innovative changes to the greenhouse in, over the past couple of years. Guys budgeted for a whole sort of climate management system that they're using. This year, they really stripped the greenhouse down to have some ground-based irrigation and drainage system, so they're not dealing with tables and a lot of equipment and a lot of problems, and it's working really well, I think. Going forward, the greenhouse is probably going to be the big capital thing that we're talking about, you know, the need to redesign that and rebuild it. But they've been really innovative in their thinking and, you know, buying that climate system that would, that would work in a, in a future greenhouse. It's not, you know, one of the ways to, to have it in this one. So, you know, those are, those are the things probably coming for the future, that, that greenhouse development. That's about what I have. I can answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. I'm sorry. I have to run. I have another meeting. So, thanks for having me.
Appreciate it very much.
Steve.
Good evening. Steve, my name is Steve Ribby. I'm here to represent the Automotive Technology Department. I've been a prior automotive business owner. Currently, I'm an instructor at Bristol Plymouth Technical School in Tawn. At our last meeting, we discussed equipment needs, and just like the Horticulture Department, all the instructors there agreed that they're very well outfitted with all the equipment that they need, technology updates, maybe a little bit of tool storage that they could use in the future coming up. But as far as big expenditures and, and large equipment, they're really in good shape. So, one of the other things that we talked about is the opportunities for the students in the program, and the focus that the instructors have put on, really trying to get their students ready for entry-level positions in dealerships and repair shops and things in the area. Right now, there's a, a real high demand for technicians out in the automotive field. A lot of people retiring and whatnot, so there's a lot of opportunities out there. And the instructors are really doing a great job preparing these, these kids. One way that I know that, one of my current roles in the position that I'm at now with Bristol Plymouth is to be the school-to-business liaison. And I go out and I meet with a lot of the, the employers in my district, as well as, you know, adjoining communities, and they kind of overlap with some of the, the places that you would send your students. And the employers have, in talking to them, have said that the students that are coming out of Silver Lake and coming into these businesses are very well-prepared, and the instructors are doing a great job. So, I think that, you know, they deserve congratulations. The instructors, Arsenal, and Muthrop, and Wilson are doing a great job providing that service to the community, which I think is, you know, if the end result is what we want to do, is we want to provide, you know, a good product to the community. So, things have really seemed to be going well in that department. So, is there any questions I can answer, or... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy McAllister. I'm new to the advisory committee this, this year, and my first time. So, apologize for maybe being nervous here. But I have enjoyed being on the advisory.
Cindy, your job is also...
And I am the Director of High Pipea Preschool, actually owner as well. I just bought it two years ago. So, I'm a new owner, and really to the director-owner field. So, I've been a teacher there for fifteen years. So, I, my daughter came through the early education with Ms. Barbara. So, first of all, was a parent. Now, I'm on the other side with business owner, seeing the dreams coming out. But Haley was a great experience, was, is a wonderful program. I can't say enough as a, as a parent, the whole school system is wonderful. Ms. Barbara's wonderful. She just soared. And I didn't even know she was going to go into early education when I was a teacher, so it was a really big surprise to me. But then she came out, and I, I do not employ any of the co-op children, students, not children, sorry, I'm always thinking of little ones, coming through yet, because I do not have an, my afternoon program is not curriculum. So, I don't have any of the co-op students coming to me yet. It might change. But Haley did, was employed at another facility, enjoyed it, and got great training and great success there. And, and I just wanted to tell you, from then on, she's now employed, going to Bridgewater Early Education, and employed with me in the afternoon as well. She's at the Alden School in Ducksbury. So, she's great. Doors have opened up for her through this program. It started this program, and it's just, just opened up many, many doors. So, I can't say enough about the program and what it does. And I hope I will be able to eventually use it in my facility. I do have actually a student from Pembroke High School coming, doing a school project with me. So, it's great to see her coming through and helping mentor, mentor her so that she knows what to expect in, being in a, in a classroom environment with preschoolers. So, I get, I've been able to see that through her, and instead eventually hopefully use the co-op from Silver Lake. So, it's been great being on the committee and being here. We were just talking about the last, so the allied health, health career path that they were just talking about, and it's a great opportunity, I think, for more children to get involved in this aspect as well. So...
We have that conversation, since we've talked about allied health, that there's a lot of students that are looking at early education care that have that kind of broader interest in working with children or in things that cross over into the medical side of things. So, it's something that's been recognized there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob.
Bob Foley. I'm a Kingston resident. I'm a teacher at Blue Hills Regional Technical High School in, in Canton. As a carpentry instructor, and I serve on the advisory committee for the carpentry program, and they are very appreciative of everything that the school has done to support their needs. They're in pretty good shape. In carpentry, there's a lot of emerging technology that our board does a great job of helping them stay abreast of. There are a couple of pieces of things, equipment, that they're looking for. They're looking to get another soft stop machine. If you don't know, that's the hot dog machine that if you, it senses the, the electro something or other in your fingers, and it'll engage the blade instead of cutting your finger off, which is pretty cool. And then maybe even a, a smaller CNC machine to, a little more user-friendly for the kids to do some smaller-sized projects with that. Elliot also asked me to speak to you all about a program called Skills USA, which is a competition-type of a program where kids compete in their trade areas. It also has a leadership component to it. And I believe Elliot put a flyer into your packet that you can read at your leisure. I don't want to kind of go through and rehash that, but a couple of weeks ago, we had a state conference and competition, and over 6,500 kids competed in 101 categories. And it happens year after year after year. That is the largest gathering of high school students in the Commonwealth. So, it's, it's pretty impressive. I actually had the luxury of, I shouldn't say the luxury, but the honor of being the educational representative to the Board of Directors. And it's a full-fledged program. I mean, they empower kids. They help the kids develop 21st century skills. It's a program that if a school invests in it, there's STEM curriculum to help the CTE teachers address that need in their different programs. They have a professional development series, not for the teachers, but for the students, that help give them the soft skills that our employers are looking for today. This, at the conference, we had a, a couple of the guys from carpentry come out and walk around with me at the state conference to kind of see what it's all about, and it's, it's pretty impressive. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. I can hear Mr. Free in the back. We had a little bit, because we talked for years about Skills USA. We're an outlier in the state as far as not being involved. So, we've got a few teachers that are interested, and we're starting to talk about that. So, that's why we got out there. You know, I know even Mr. Robert is offered some support from another school for us to get started. So, we're going to try to get the ball rolling with a, a few of our kids and programs next year with that. Catherine.
Yep. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Catherine Hackett. I own Cranberryvine Caters. I'm on the advisory board with the culinary program, and have enjoyed working with Joanne and Jill. I think that they have done an unbelievable job. We've talked about all different kinds of trends and modes, and, and actually, our last conversations were more about getting the kids ready to go into the business professionally, to know... It's hard, because restaurant industry and the food industry, people don't take always that seriously. And I think that they have instilled a real professional attitude in the kids, you know, getting to show up on time and, you know, do their job completed and stuff like that, because you see so many people go into the industry and go out. So, it's used as a temporary kind of, you know, pass to get through college, blah, 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 but they don't take it seriously. And I think that Joanne and Jill have both been great with that. We've talked about having the kids do the allergen awareness program. They've all done their, they've all done their safe serve, but most of them haven't, yeah. And the allergen awareness, of course, is required by all of us. But I am, I mean, that's, I'm a caterer, so that's the first question I have to ask my client, is if there's any food issues, and how important that really is. And I have a gluten-free events, or half of it's gluten-free. So, my kitchen has to be completely broken down and cleared and cleaned and sanitized before I can prepare that food. And we talked about that a lot. We talked about the importance of it, and how it's becoming so prevalent. And that was pretty good. But a lot of it was about getting the kids prepared to take on the job, show up. You know, it's prom. They don't show. They don't call, because that's a big problem in the industry. Big, huge problem. There's no shows, no calls, you know, showing up late. I can't work on Saturday. You know, unfortunately, our industry is based, we work a lot of Saturdays. But that's about it. And I commend them and you for supporting them, because it's a great program.
The last thing on our list, wasn't able to be here last minute. Jason Martin owns SLT Construction. He's a Silver Lake grad. He's been a really great resource to us in metal fabrication. Here's a couple of quick notes there. But he was largely complimenting our new teacher, David Cornell, that came to us from Kappa Tech. He's done a lot in the metal fabrication program to kind of reconceptualize how we set things up, and we've made better use of some space. And he's brought some great new ideas. We've added welding booths and kind of a fresh twist on some things in there, which has been fun. So, again, just quick and summary, you know, I think it's important that, you know, that we've got great support on this side as well in our community, as you're supportive to us in the ways that you can be. We're always looking for new connections, and we're always trying to keep those kind of fresh and relevant. And they, they work hard to be part of our team over the course of the year. So, I'm super appreciative of having them with us. So, thanks for giving the time tonight.
Absolutely. And I'll speak as one member only, but as we are, I mean, thank you so much for bringing your experience and your energy to these programs to lend guidance. I mean, without the, the current pulse of the industry, these industries, you know, these programs would, you know, not be as, you know, genuinely beneficial and as strong as, as they are. So, thank you so much for, for doing that for us.
Paul.
No.
I just wanted to mention, asking Elliot through Paula, you mentioned the allied health, and that's a program that we had hoped to start next year, but because of the budget, we weren't able to. And I think it's, it's important to stress, something we're really interested in, and we know that it would be a great opportunity for the kids. So, you know, we need to keep that in mind as we plan for the next year budget. As well, you know, the industries that are available, they're growing all the time. And with the experts here, what we can offer our children for their future. Not all, all the kids are going to go to college. I think it's really important that we push that. And thanks for mentioning that as the crossover.
Great. Great. And then the last thing I just didn't reference in here was, there's an invitation on the third page for you to attend a brief little open house for our carpentry program. We've talked about this before. The subcommittee, RCT subcommittee, wanted to make sure that you were aware and invited. It's a very small window. It's just a chance for us during school hours with our juniors to open up the garage that they've completed behind the tennis courts to show off their work. So, on a Tuesday morning in a couple of weeks, there's a, a small window again there that will be out there, and our students will be able to kind of tour you around and show you what they did. So, if you're around, please stop by.
Excellent.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right. At this point, I just want to see, is there any public participation? Anybody want to participate from a public standpoint? Seeing the minutes, if we've taken a peek at those, and if I could have a motion for them?
Regular minutes from April 13 for release, and executive minutes from April 13 to hold.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Thank you, Mark. Oh, my goodness, yes. I'm sorry. Can we take one more item out of order, please?
Absolutely.
We do have the luxury of having our auditor. In, in all of the... Yeah.
I don't mind. Good evening. My name's Grady Conrum. I'm one of the partners with the firm of Lynch-Moore-Marini, where the district's independent auditors. And I'm here to present an overview, summary of the audit for the year ended June 30, 2016. Again, what's the purpose of, of, of the audit? The audit's primary purpose is to, for us to issue our independent auditor's report, which is to express an opinion on the district's financial statements. Our audit is conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. Our audit is conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, which require an issuance of an independent audit's report on internal controls over financial reporting and other matters that could have a direct and material effect on the district's financial statements. That report will not expressing an opinion on internal controls. And because the district expended greater than $750,000 in federal awards, a single audit is required. And that audit is, we're required to issue a report on compliance and internal control over the compliance with the requirements of major programs. For fiscal '16, the district spent approximately $1.7 million in federal awarded monies. Okay? So what were the results of our audit? So the financial statements, again, our primary function is to issue that independent audit's report. As in years past, we issued an unmodified opinion, which in auditing terms means that in our professional opinion, the financial statements of the district are fairly stated in material respects in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. Okay? The statements in the associated schedules of the district in the packet, first set of statements are referred to as the government-wide financial statements, which present the district's financial activity on a full accrual basis, similar to a private industry. The district's aggregate net position at June 30th was $28.3 million. The largest component of that net position was $44 million, which is the district's investment in its capital assets, which is the capital assets of about $57 million, less the outstanding debt of $13 million. The next component of that $28.3 is about $381,000, which is essentially the district's revolving fund, aggregate balances at that point in time. And then the big one that jumps out is the, everything else that remains is the unrestricted net position of the district was in a deficit of about $16 million, which is comprised of 11.6 million of net OPEB obligation and $7.3 million of net pension liability. Again, the OPEB liability increased $1,606,000 for the year and the net pension liability increased about $590,000 for the year over the prior year. In fiscal year 2018, GAFB statement number 75 is required to be implemented for all municipal entities in the country. So essentially, it's requiring that the total funded liability associated with the OPEB liability is required to be put onto the financial statements. As of the district's last valuation, that liability itself was $26.1 million. Okay? So that deficit would, again, if they had been implemented this year, you know, your deficit would have increased another, what's that, $15 million. Okay? So again, that's not unusual of all the entities that we audit. In Massachusetts, pretty much everybody has an unrestricted net position deficit, essentially for the same reasons with the OPEB and the net pension liabilities. The overall decrease in the net position for the year was about $3.7 million. This is comprised of, again, the $1.4 million in fund balance that was returned to the members, member towns as a reduction of their assessments as a result of fiscal, DOR's E and D calculation June 30, 15, and the net full accrual adjustment of $3 million. The next set of statements are the fund basis statements, which are, it's pretty close to what the district reports in their accounting records on a daily basis. The general fund at June 30th was $2.2 million, a decrease of about $1.5 million from the prior year. Again, that is a result of the use of the fund balance pursuant to DOR. The remaining components of the general fund were the committed fund balance of $662,000, which is the $637 that the school committee appropriated for capital improvements and the $25,000 that you're starting the OPEB trust fund with. Assigned fund balance of $94,000, which represents the carryover encumbrances into fiscal '17. And the final component is the unassigned fund balance, again, the reserves that you have of about $1.4 million. Again, with that number, you're essentially at the maximum that you would have been able to maintain under Mass. general law. So you're in a good position there. The other non-major governmental funds on the financials are, report the aggregate fund balances of about $364,000. Again, that's the district's remaining revolving funds and grants together. The final schedule in the statement, again, is the budgetary comparison schedule of the general fund. The district appropriated in the final budget about $25.2 million. You spent $24.9, so you had a savings of about $320,000 on the appropriations and you had about $274,000 of positive side on the budgeted revenues. And again, that's with the net meeting credits and the retiree insurance payments from Pembroke. Again, the next report that we issued was the report in accordance with government auditing standards, referred to as GAAP. We did not report any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the financial reporting systems of the district and we did not report any material non-compliances with any laws or regulations affecting the district's financial statements. Again, finally, the single audit. As I said, the district spent more than $750,000. For fiscal '16, a major program that was tested, again, major programs determined by us as the auditor under certain requirements that we calculated, it was the special education cluster, which are your, the SPED grant, and we did not report any findings in regards to compliance or internal control of compliance. We didn't report an other matter finding for the district to implement more formalized documentation over those internal controls and policies and procedures over federal grants. Again, OMB, which oversees single audit requirements, issued new guidance for fiscal '16. And again, that finding that we reported in Silver Lake, I've reported in all my entities, so again, it's not anything specific to Silver Lake per se, but the feds are trying to get everybody to kind of, you know, more formally document all those proceedings. Again, you're meeting the requirement, but it's, they're really pushing that at the federal level for more formal documentation of those things. So overall, again, no significant or material issues. Any questions that I can try to answer?
Grady, the, thank you for that. And the last portion, you were just talking about stronger documentation, is that something that at some point in a future audit, you're going to need to see or it's going to be reported as a deficiency? Do you see it becoming something that?
Yeah, again, we, yes, we need, we follow up on all audit findings. Again, the standards will continue again unless OMB changes something, but, you know, we did speak with management and, you know, they're going to address it and anticipate. You know, again, obviously, it's not going to be done by June 30th of this year, so, you know, I think the expectation is by the end of fiscal '18 that that will be met by the district.
Thank you. Maureen?
Grady, I had a question for you. Thank you, as Paula said, this was great and I think it's wonderful that you come and go over this with us every year. Under your auditor's report, page 32, when is this? I don't know, it's one of our things. Well, my question is, you have healthcare trend rates on here and it goes from 2013 projecting out to 2020. And I noticed the highest that is is 10%. This past year, we're facing 15% increases.
Right, well, that, those numbers there in the schedule that you're talking about, those are, those are from the actuarial evaluation, okay? So again, not to get muddied into the, you know, use of the actuary report. The actuary is doing all that. So yes, on a, on a page you go, you know, each year, you know, it's jumping. So I believe, I believe next year is the, the next year that the district is going to be required to have the valuation done. It's two, every two years.
That makes sense.
Okay, so that'll change. And again, with GAFB 75 going into effect in fiscal '18, the numbers are going to fluctuate even more with how it's required to be calculated, okay?
All right.
You know, so that liability and all those things, you know, that's a little different than, you know, the cash pay as you go going out the door.
Sure. I appreciate that because it's something that we have to walk so closely to.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions that I can try to answer?
I just wanted to say thank you. You know, I've been asking Grady to come and I really appreciate him, his willingness to come. I found him outside the high school because I accidentally was there too. So, force of habit. But, you know, one of the things that I've really wanted to try to work on is to make sure everybody, it feels like our Silver Lake is transparent, we're communicating our economic positions and what is happening. And Grady and Rob were wonderful. We had a meeting with Christine and Mel and I wanted to point out what a great job he has done to look at everything, but he offered a compliment to me, which I wish to share with you, was how lucky I was to have Christine, Ianley and Melanie Capasa with us. So I did want to share that unfortunately Christine was unable to be with us here tonight, but I did want to publicly recognize that Grady made a point of letting me know that I was very lucky, which I am already quite well aware of, to work with them. So thank you, Grady. I really appreciate your willingness to come and talk with us.
Absolutely. And again, we appreciate, you know, the good management team, good, and again, they take what we do and what we have to say seriously and so does the board over the years. And again, I appreciate coming before you and try to get more accounting students to join us here too.
There you go, there you go. Thank you, Grady.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I, can I ask one? And I'm kind of saying this projecting out 12 months, I guess, could we get these mailed to us before the school committee meeting that we're going to discuss them?
Sure, we can try that. We just got them, but I could look Grady to see if we could get them a little sooner.
Yeah, if possible, because that way you might have some time to.
Sure. He did do a little, I don't know if you noticed or not, in your packet, there is, what he spoke to was a little one pager that is here, but I could try that.
Yeah, just, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
Kind of, it's part of my background too, so I'm morbidly more curious than others, maybe, but.
I could at least send out a note, let you know when we get them.
Yep.
Perfect, if you want to pick up.
Okay.
Would you, can I ask if they were electronically sent to you, would that be a problem?
Even better.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Same with tree.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
I'll follow this.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Silver Lake Education Association.
Hey, everyone. Kim Morpey, for those who don't know me, president of the SLA. I don't have much to report other than that we're looking forward to finalize the contract negotiations and to thank the committee and the communities for approaching budgets, for their support, their continued support of the schools here. We know how hard everybody works and we appreciate it. And I just wanted to mention, although I'm sure everyone here is aware, but folks at home might not know, that Mr. Mulkey, you mentioned over 40 independent studies. All of those independent studies are volunteered, teachers giving up their preps, the free time that they have at school when they're supposed to be doing all work in a day condensed to the one-hour block. They give up that time to spend additional time with their kids, so their kids can explore all these amazing opportunities that otherwise they wouldn't have. So they take that upon themselves, which means more work off the clock, more work at home, more work with time away from their kids, their families, to help the students here. So I just wanted to remind the community, I know you all know that, I wanted to remind the community that that's where all these extra classes are coming from. It's from generosity and the passion of the teachers here in the SLA. And aside from that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, administrative review, no meeting.
No, and I had mentioned to Paula prior to this, we have Casey Hansen, who is chair of admin review and also union 31. I don't think we need to do anything now because we have elections coming up and some people may change on the committees, but I was, I would ask that over the summer or in early in September, maybe like the August meeting, if Paula can call an admin review meeting and I was going to ask you, Erica, if you'd call a union 31, because everything needs to be reorganized, but there's no chairperson. So I'll mention it again, but I don't think we have anything that admin review has to do over the next few months. I think we're pretty much caught up.
Yep.
So, and we don't need to meet with the union again, excuse me, because we've completed shared cost. So just keep that in the back of everybody's mind.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Be proactive rather than, when do we need to meet him? Yeah, thank you, Maureen. Okay, CTE, I don't know, we've had a wonderful presentation.
No, easy.
Okay. Chairman's report, I don't have anything to report other than Halifax Town Meeting occurred Monday night and the budget was passed unanimously without any question. It was a wonderful thing to witness and I think, I think the strong communication with the towns and the, you know, the way we've gone to the budget and the materials that have been shared, I think has helped in a, in a big way with at least.
Totally agree.
Halifax.
Yes.
Getting comfortable. So appreciate everybody's support. Town of Halifax residents, appreciate your support. We bit off a lot of things that night, including the senior center, which was wonderful. And again, thank you for the support. So one town down, two to go. Legislative agents report.
So Madam Chair, I sent an email update of the current situation for the state budget. I hope you all received it, but in case you didn't. April traditionally is the month where we've taken over 15% of the state's revenue for the entire year and it was a miss by a wide margin. The current budget at the State House is over a percent behind the projections. Governor Baker is still saying that there'll be no 9C cuts. He's also determined not to dip into the rainy day fund, but since our fiscal year 18 budget at the state level hasn't been finalized yet, there was a high-level meeting on Monday at the State House discussing how to move forward from here and there was no consensus. So we're meeting it in next week to determine whether or not they have to revise down their revenue projections for next year and thus revise down the $40.2 billion budget that they had proposed prior at the joint committee level. Regardless of how this pans out, whether they touch education or not, if unrestricted free aid comes to towns in a reduced form, it will impact all of the departments within towns and put pressure onto the schools. So it's just something to pay attention to and be aware of. The other thing at the federal level is the Congress did pass a repeal of the Affordable Healthcare Act and part of the monies that would be repealed would be Medicaid funds that would impact special ed program. And believe it or not, there's some monies tied into special ed through healthcare at the federal level. So if this continues to go down the path of the Senate and approval by the President, it will impact us even outside of the projected budget proposals that the President has laid on the table thus far for next year. In good news. You have some? I have a little bit of good news. Many of you know, had reform last occurred in Massachusetts in the early 90s and that was when the foundation budget was first developed and the last time it's been considered. Many towns and communities, including suburban, urban and rural communities, have all argued that the current way that the formula works is discriminatory against their students and their populations. There was a commission put together to review how the foundation budget is considered. It came up with some points two years ago to take into consideration, the legislature passed over them last year, but some very high-powered influential people at the State House level have put some of those recommendations onto the table and they're currently being considered by the state legislature. If passed, the no-on-two campaign and the yes-on-two campaign that we just went through is going to seem like the good old days when everybody was pals because that's when we're going to be looking at a statewide ballot initiative to raise revenues, which means raise taxes on some. raise taxes on some people. So, that is waiting in the wings.
That was bittersweet.
Yes.
That was the good news?
It sounded good in the beginning of the battle.
Don't start. If you end there...
Thank you for that.
My pleasure.
Negotiations.
Executive session.
Thank you. PAC?
No, it's real good news. So, we just wrapped up one of our final strategic planning meetings that are open to members of the PAC's larger community. Joy was part of that, Marie Grable was part of it, and I was part of it as well. We're really looking at what the PAC should look like in the next five years or so. So, we did what's called backwards design in the educational world. We talked about the vision we have right now for what PAC could be in five years, and then we came up with the plan after we had the vision to get it to where we want to see it. So, again, it still needs to be worked on and finalized a little bit with the administration at the collaborative, so I'm not ready to put out on the table for you yet any of the amazing things they're talking about. But I walked away from that meeting energized. I walked away from the meeting with hope, and I also walked away from the meeting exhausted.
Yeah.
The other thing I'd like to bring to the table tonight is, next year, starting with the first day of school, the collaborative and all their programs will be extending their students' school day by a half an hour. So, our students from our three communities who go to these schools because they're some of our most needy students will be receiving high-quality education from experts in their field to help address some of their needs, and I'm very happy to announce that and very thankful for the work that went into this by not only the director of the collaborative, but also the teachers who we negotiated through this process with.
Thank you. Policy, no meeting. Revolving funds, no meeting. What do we call this?
State... The only report we haven't had meeting, though, we are interviewing for the facilities new position. We had narrowed it down to seven interviews. We've already done four of them, and we have three more to do on this coming Monday.
Fantastic.
You happy with the quality of people?
He doesn't mind.
I don't really make any decisions at this point. We want to interview all of the candidates.
With the quality of the outcome?
Impressed.
They seem impressive, some of them.
Sleep study.
We actually are calling a meeting for May twenty-fifth, and at that meeting, we're not sure of the agenda yet. I have to check it with Chrissy. We're going to discuss the Masbo report, decide how we want to proceed, and then the decision at that meeting will go to S F F R to decide which way we're going to handle it.
Okay, wonderful. Treasurers' report.
Hi, now.
Find some good news.
So, tonight, I'd like to say that all of the committee members got the warrants to me and signed, and they're ready to go back to Christine's office. So, there was thirteen warrants circulating the table for nine-hundred-forty-four thousand one hundred ninety dollars and seventy-one cents. There was one payroll warrant circulating the table for six-hundred-ninety-nine thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty-nine cents for a grand total tonight of one million six hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars and zero cents.
Thank you. And union thirty-one, no meeting. Okay, we can turn it over to Chrissy for her report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, I just want to start off, our students have been immersed in our M C A S season, and everyone is doing a really great job of implementation. I do think that our experience last year with the online assessment allowed us for a very smooth transition this year at the middle school. Oftentimes, the term "smooth as butter" has been used. So, it's a real kudos to our tech department, our teachers. At one point, I think the internet did go down, and our teachers just didn't even blink and remained calm, and our students were, there was no anxious emotions for our students because of how calm our teachers remained. And also, a true credit goes to our principal, Mr. DuPille, with his forward thinking and always making sure that the teachers are prepared and feel supported, so thank you for that. And our high school M C A S are underway and going well as well. But I do want to alert you to one particular component of the M C A S this year. In the past, students in grades eight and ten have always participated in a survey of some sort after the science, tech, and engineering M C A S in grade eight and the math M C A S in grade ten. The survey has always gathered data for the state, or any given particular initiative that was of interest of that year. And this year, this survey is also scheduled to be given in grade five as well, which doesn't affect the Silver Lake campus, but it does affect our elementary schools. We do have a choice whether or not to give the survey, and due to the amount of testing, we have seen the increased number, the increased minutes of testing that our students are participating in, we've decided not to participate in the survey. The survey was gathering information on school climate. While we do know that data can be valuable, we would like to create a tool that would provide us with useful information pertaining to our own specific needs. So, I just want you to be aware of that. Just to, our grants, in your packet, you'll find the grant summaries for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. The first page is a comparison over the past ten years. This year, it appears that our overall funding has increased drastically. Unfortunately, the data is very skewed, and actually, our funding has decreased a bit, so let me explain. Last year, I pointed out that the E-Rate Category Two grant was new. One thing that we've noticed is that the E-Rate grant and the Category Two grant can skew the numbers a bit. These are two grants that provide discounted rates for telecommunications services, as well as supporting the technology infrastructure within the buildings. The grants are applied for in five-year increments. We are provided with a certain allocation. However, how we spend it over those five years may look as if we've received more one year over another. We currently have three of the grants, so we have a significant reduction this year because of the phone system. We used a lot of the money from this for the phone systems at Silver Lake last year. This is the, so this is the reason for the significant decrease from last year to this year for what Silver Lake received. The category that is skewing the overall data is the M S B A grant that Halifax received this year. M S B A is used for major building projects, and Halifax has received a grant for their roofing project. So, just to keep you aware of that. There are other grants listed that I just would like to tell you how they are used. The first two listed are the two forty and two sixty-two special education grants that are used to actually fund specific personnel within the district. We also receive the special education two seventy-four grant, which is used for professional development, and this year, it was used in the area of social-emotional learning. Each year, the state designates what the specific topic is to be. And so, for example, for example, we also use the teacher quality grant for, our teacher quality grant is essential to our professional development, and we use that for our new teacher induction program, which is mentoring onsite graduate courses, conferences, and workshops, like Jessica Minahan. When she came to visit us, we funded that through Title One, as well as the two seventy-four grant, and more. Also, our Title One grant provides direct services for students, as well as our summer school offerings. So, if you have any questions or suggestions on how we utilize these funds, please feel free to contact me. The last page in the packet highlights many donations and outside grants that teachers and staff have been awarded this year. This year, our staff has received almost fifty-six thousand dollars in additional grants to serve our students. Silver Lake teachers alone brought in over nineteen thousand dollars in supplies for our students. While our state allocation, our state grant allocations are decreasing, our teachers are working hard to supplement this funding by outside resources, and this includes donations from Donors Choose, private donors, Target, Hannah Firds, and more. So, regarding the grants, if you have any questions or suggestions regarding this information, please feel free to contact me, and I'd love to speak with you further about it. Just lastly, summer programs. I did mention this last month, but I'll just remind everyone that students entering grades seven and eight will be invited to attend the middle school summer school program. This program, they'll be offered by highly qualified teachers who provide students instruction in the areas of reading, writing, and math. The summer program will occur from July eleventh through July twenty-seventh, and will be held on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays of those weeks. And that's what I have for you this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
Is fifth grade doing the trial for the online science test?
Yes, they are.
So, that sort of adds to the additional...
Exactly, yes, and as well as the eighth grade.
Okay.
Yes, so that, thank you for pointing that out. I neglected to mention that. There is a practice online, currently, our science, our science, tech, engineering, M C A S is still paper and pencil. However, this year, we are allowed to partake in a...
Trial.
A trial, a tryout, a mock test, thank you.
Get a pilot.
And a pilot, thank you. And we are, we are partaking in that, so that will be another day of assessing for our students, and those are the particular grades where the survey is being offered. We decided to get a look at the science assessment when it turns, when it goes online.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you have the floor.
I have the floor. Thank you very much. Well, as I mentioned, Christine was unable to be with us this evening, so I just wanted to review our monthly financial report. I did have an opportunity to discuss this with Christine. We are doing very well. We will get to the finish line. I want to thank the principals for doing a great job of maintaining our budgets. There really aren't any areas of specific concern that we have within the line items. We will be able to balance. There is just one area, I did want to mention, when Grady was here, we talked a little bit about O P A D. If you remember, I think it was in March, Christine had mentioned that rules have changed, but this year, we're still able to, if the money's available, take it out. At this point in time, I still believe we'll be able to fund twenty-five thousand, which was what our hope was, out of insurance benefits. When you look at this report, I wanted to just remind you that this year, we changed the funding of the two forty grant, the special education grant. You may remember, we've mentioned it a few times. We used to fund teachers. If you fund teachers, the government automatically takes out M T R S. So, before any money was spent from the grant, we lost forty thousand dollars because the retirement system was just automatically pulled out of the grant. So, we no longer fund teachers from the two forty grant, special education teachers. We're funding power professionals. So, to make up the difference, because we didn't have as many power professionals as we had teachers, we are funding the power professionals' health insurance. So, when you look at this health insurance balance right now, we have not refunded from the two forty grant our health insurance. So, we have some movement of funds. What I'm basically trying to get at, and Christine would say this probably much clearer, and I apologize, is that when we refund the two forty grant, we'll have that twenty-five thousand dollars that we wanted to put in O P A D. Okay? So, it may look like right now, we don't have it, but we will have it once we're able to get those final numbers, take it out of the two forty grant, the health insurance for our power professionals. So, I think we're doing very well. We'll definitely get to the finish line, and if anybody has any questions, please let me know. But Christine did not have any areas that she was particularly concerned about.
Any questions?
You have in your packet this evening the F Y eighteen meeting schedule, and I just wanted to say a couple things about it. When we designed it, we again did what we did this year, if you like the process, was we went three months at the high school, three months at the middle school, and then when we're doing budgets, we sort of stay at the high school, and then we swing back into the middle school. I don't know if you have decided you like that process. I will admit, I drove to the high school tonight, so I apparently am unable to follow the direction, but the good news was, I found Grady, so it all worked. Because otherwise, because he doesn't have any of our personal cell numbers, I felt, I was really glad I forgot. I was running from another meeting and just had it. So, that's one thing to note. The other thing is, I assume you still like having a seven o'clock meeting, but I do just want to mention, there is no law. It has to be at seven o'clock. If people prefer five o'clock, we meet in Plimpton at five. Three, I love three. But, you know, if seven o'clock works for the group, that's fine, but, you know, again, it's just sort of food for thought. So, those are sort of the two pieces of information. I know Laura had brought up, which was a great point, is sometimes if we have the Friday off, I'm trying to remember, there may have been...
I think it was the November one.
I think it was just the November was the only one, and I'm not sure that there was another easy date because of Thanksgiving, but it was a good point to keep in mind for other years. But I don't know if you had any other thoughts about the schedule?
I'm going to chime in with just my own personal feeling. I like rotating schools.
Okay.
I like coming to the middle school. I really do.
You like the three and three, or just every other month?
It doesn't, I'm not, I'm flexible, but I like being in both buildings. Yeah, I do. I'm going to share one more, again, just as one individual. A three o'clock meeting would kill me.
Yeah, no.
I mean, you know me, I come for subcon meetings when I, when we schedule them at those times. You know, I probably, I mean, working folks, I don't know that anything before seven is going to generally work. I'm one of the guys.
I laugh so hard.
Any other thoughts? Maureen.
I think it's nice that you have us in an air-conditioned, nice space here for all of it. In our budget time at the high school, I think the facility accommodates the large group of people we usually attract for the discussion, so I think this is great.
And no cell signal during those budget discussions, so at the high school. Here, I got it, there it is.
There you go. Great. So, if you'd like to vote this schedule?
I'll move it.
I second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much. Ms. Tatt had mentioned we had the town meeting in Halifax Monday night. Again, I just personally wanted to thank the town of Halifax. The budget went through incredibly smooth. It was a unanimous vote. We had the full support of the selectmen and the finance committee. I was thrilled, we worked very hard to communicate with them our needs and to come to a number that the towns could support. Next week, on Wednesday, we have the great town of Plimpton for their town meeting. I believe both the finance and selectmen are in favor of our budget, so I'm very optimistic. And then the following...
Tuesday and Wednesday.
I knew that, thank you, Carl.
And Thursday and...
Tuesday, you know what? Halifax did it in one night. I got home after midnight, but they did it in one night.
Kingston, more or less.
Yeah, it was. So, the following Tuesday, we have Kingston, and I believe in Kingston, both the selectmen and finance are fully supporting our budget. So, I want to thank the towns and thank the school committees, but hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, will be official, and I appreciate all their support throughout the process. Anyone who is available and would like to come to the town meetings, we obviously greatly appreciate the support of all of the community, including all of our staff and teachers. The last one, I will do my best to get through. As most of you know, I have a tendency to wear my heart on my sleeve, so I apologize. I probably will cry. Sorry. How do you do it?
You'll get me going, so hold it together.
Yeah, it'll be a trickle. Yeah, that can be good. So, our wonderful high school principal, Jim Mulkey, has accepted a job at Sandwich, which is the town where he lives. I was, tried my best to give him a bad recommendation. I couldn't do it. I'm a liar, so I just couldn't do it. Sandwich is extremely lucky to have him. Jim and I started together. For those of you who don't know that, we've been together for eleven years. He came in for his interview. I think his wife has, was in labor, or just beginning labor, and his dedication has stayed through there. Jim is someone that I personally have really depended on, both personally and professionally. It is a huge loss for me. I'm not handling it well on many levels. So, I wish Jim nothing but the best. I don't want in any way, shape, or form take it away from him. The reason why it is under me is I have to make a decision about how I'm going forward. I'm only recently beginning to accept the reality of this change. So, what I have decided to do is I'd like to... So what I have decided to do is I'd like to post a interim principal. And what that will mean, there's basically three options we have. Why don't I start with that? The first option would be to do a national search for a principal, which would mean put it on school spring. And that would be traditionally a three-year contract. It is late in the season to do a full search, so I have some concerns about going that route. Another option that we would have would be to just do an internal posting. We have extremely well-qualified internal candidates in our district. The third choice would be to do an interim, which would basically be for a year. It is not an uncommon practice at all. For those of you who were here, and I do believe we have some veteran people, you may remember when John was hired as superintendent, he was hired as an interim superintendent to sort of test the waters, I guess, as a way of doing it. What I've decided that I would like to do is to hire an interim principal, which would be a one-year position. And I would like to post it on school spring, and I'm going to do a limited posting for just two weeks. We do have some internal candidates that are well-qualified, but I'd also like to see sort of what's out in the community. And again, just because of the limited timeframe and trying to have things in place as soon as possible, that is what I'd like to move forward with. So hopefully, I will be getting that out and posted tomorrow. I will be forming a search committee. If anyone is interested in serving on the committee, please email me directly. And I will be reviewing some applicants, and we will be holding interviews. And whether or not we are successful in getting a person in place by July 1, as soon as possible after that. The good news about this, and it's hard to find good news, is again, if we don't have someone in place, we have two excellent assistant principals that I'm sure can hold our fort down. And again, I, I, we have been very blessed to have Jim for 11 years with us. So thank you.
Before you comment, Jim, I think some of us probably have some, some feedback as well, and thank you for getting through that. I would actually love to be on the search committee. Joy. Okay, great, thank you. I thought about what I was going to say tonight, and I'm going to keep it brief because I'm going to pull out a tissue as well.
Yeah, I saw it.
You are a remarkable asset to this region, to the students, to this committee. You are, you're, you do your job so well, you present yourself so well, you balance the needs of the staff, the administration, the students, the community so well. You do it all so well. Your shoes are going to be so enormously hard to have somebody step into and do the job to the extent that you do it, to the level you do it. Sandwich doesn't know how lucky they are. They really, really don't. I wish you all the best. From a personal standpoint, it's clearly the best decision you could have made. I hope you can live with the fact you're breaking all our hearts. And I don't mean to take too much time from my other committee members, but I just, I have to say, you are an absolutely outstanding principal in whatever you go, wherever you travel in life, whatever level you, you achieve in, in this field. You're absolutely outstanding at what you do. And thank you for that.
Thank you. I have a lot of help, so, you know, no one does this job alone. This is a, this is a team effort, and it's always been that way. That's why it's successful. Now, the staff is outstanding. You know, I don't think, you know, I've been balancing a lot over the last few weeks with emotions and decisions, and this has been very bittersweet. Not an easy decision to make. I, you know, it's been difficult all along, talking to Joy, talking to, and not only, not on, difficult just for her, it's difficult for me, you know. Joy, the step, sharing things with the staff, the students, the parents, my colleagues and peers. It's, you know, obviously, most importantly, talking to my wife and my family about this. It's been a really hard decision. I, you know, I went to the Silver Lake preschool. I went, you know, I'm, you know...
You graduated from Miss Barber.
I graduated, you know, from Silver Lake preschool, and, and I'm a Plimpton kid, you know, that I grew up here. So this has been difficult for me, you know. You know, I've traveled around in my education career. I've, I've had, I've been fortunate to work with some great people and some great programs and have a lot of experience along the way. And, you know, it's helped shape me, and, you know, it, you know, life is a process and a, you know, it's a journey, and, and I've decided to, you know, we've settled in Sandwich, and we've been there for, that's where our roots are right now. That's where my children go to school. That's where they, their, their life is, their, their friends and our family. And, you know, that, that really is what it came down to with making this decision. It was, you know, I, I've had so much support in this community my whole life, so it's a lot to give up, and, and I know that. And, you know, I was talking to Eric right before we came in, and I said, you know, I, you know, the, the family side of things and making the decision, you know, even though it was a difficult decision, it's the right decision, I think, and I think everybody's been very understanding about that and very supportive, which I, this is a very family-based community, and I would expect nothing less, really. But the professional side, you know, I'm, I'm starting over. You know, this is a, this is a community that supported me. You know, my success is, is because of people that I work with. You know, we've worked together. It's been a team atmosphere. Every decision we've made, every, every program we've put in or taken away, depending on what, what's gone on, has been a discussion and, and a process, and everybody kind of putting in their two cents and giving their expertise and working hard. And, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss that. I'm gonna miss that tremendously. I'm gonna miss this committee. I'm gonna miss the people I work with. I'm gonna miss my colleagues, my peers. You know, I'm not going away. You know, my extended family lives in Plimpton. I'm gonna be up here, you know. I'm gonna be, I'm always gonna be a Laker and part of this community. But professionally, and, and this time in my life, as, as I've said to, I said to my staff, you know, it's, my, my kids are getting just to the age and old enough where I feel like, you know, I'm, I'm getting pulled in that direction and pulled this direction. And I want to make sure that I'm fair to everybody that's in my life and I'm involved in the things I'm supposed to be involved in, and making the time where I need to make the time. And I think we've all felt that and all dealt with that. I had an opportunity, that's what I said to Joy, the first person I talked to, you know, I got an opportunity, and, and I have to look into it. And I've gotten words of encouragement from all of you through email, and, you know, I've talked to a ton of kids, which has, you know, been hard, and up here, and the staff's been awesome. Some people have said, I can't, I'm not ready to talk to you yet. And, you know, Kim said the same thing that Joy did. I was trying hard to like, give you a bad recommendation, but I couldn't. And, you know, I, I feel the same way. I love this community, and it's a wonderful place, and it's gonna be tough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you get down to Sandwich, and you don't feel comfortable. People at Sandwich aren't as nice as we are.
And I did inform him that Silver Lake today, the boys' lacrosse team, JV, did, did play Sandwich right, right across the parking lot there today. And Silver Lake did, didn't win that game, so...
I have to share that I was introduced to the Sandwich School Committee last night, and that was the one question that was asked. Who are you going to root for? And I gave...
Pressure answer.
An answer, no, that I wouldn't normally give. I wish them all success and everybody, you know, stays healthy.
Always the diplomat. Yes, always. Exactly.
There were only a couple penalties.
All righty, well, thank you so much.
Thanks for the kind words, everyone. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Disso do. All righty, moving on, new business. I don't know that we have any old business, administration, anything? Nothing? Community outreach? I don't know that we have. Curriculum corner, we always jump over this.
We were having presentations, but we've been running the meeting so late, we haven't been bringing that in.
All righty, okay.
But I'd love to bring it back in.
Okay.
I miss it.
All righty. And principals' reports.
Yes, thank you.
Your school, your time.
Here we go. So first of all, I just want to thank our students are so talented and coming here tonight and sharing just a piece of what we'll be seeing on Saturday, May 20th, and Sunday, May 21st. So if you have an opportunity, I do welcome everybody to come and see them perform. It is amazing what our students can do on stage. So I want to thank them again. The second piece is the student handbook. We're very lucky, our student handbook, we didn't have any changes this coming year, so that makes it easy for everybody. The only change we have is the one that you guys voted in, which was the price from $2.75 to $3, which of course, we'll make that change in our handbook. So that's the one thing, I, I know I need to vote for that. I could wait till next time, but that's our only change. I don't know if you want to...
I move that we accept the slight change that we have in the middle school handbook.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Thank you. So also, MCAS, we've been talking a little bit about that. So we've had our MCAS online assessments recently, so that has been going very smooth. Students have been persevering through that one technical difficulty, and they've really done a great job. I give them all the credit and the teachers all the credit for doing a wonderful job in the classrooms. We do have an online science pilot that's coming up, the first week of June. Just wanted to let you guys know that. We'll be piloting the online science MCAS assessment. Right now, it is still paper-based, it's the last remaining for the eighth grade. That's paper-based, but they are moving to the online, and so we get a chance to pilot that this year. Step Up Day, Step Up Day is coming on June 8th, and I just wanted to let you guys know that the master schedule has been moving forward, and we will have students on teams for Step Up Days when they come up. They will actually see the students that will be on team next year. They'll see the teachers that'll be on team next year, and they'll have that great opportunity to feel more comfortable, which is one of the reasons why we do Step Up Day, is for that transition to be as powerful as possible. So the master schedule will be ready, again, for the students on Step Up Day. We have a Scholar Leader Dinner coming up on May 17th. I want to congratulate Ben Loftstrom and Karatuzic, who are named the 2017 Silver Lake Middle School Scholar Leaders. Students we recognize for their excellence in education at a statewide dinner that will be held at Westin Royal Plaza in Marlborough. And I also want to throw in a special congratulations to our finalists, who are Drew Donahue, James Kukets, Grace Beck, and Antounas. I also want to just quickly talk about our robotics club. One of the things that we've really been expanding since the addition of our tech teacher is some of the things that we get involved with. We have a robotics club, we have invention convention, and our robotics club went up to UMass, and they had a competition, a blockball competition, Saturday, April 29th. And I want to congratulate our students, Linwood Blaisdell, Richie Green, Joel Harvey, Scott McKee, Matt Picarilly, Mark Picarilly, Tyler Swift, Owen Barkersley, Nick McAuliffe, Emily Ruckles, and Michael Triantifone for participating up at UMass, doing a wonderful job. There are 18 team schools representing. Sixteen were high school teams, two were middle school teams, and the middle school outscored not only some of the middle school teams, but some of the high school teams. So they really had a great event, it was a great opportunity for them to do that. And then, they have a second opportunity, which is coming up at the Program for the STEM Resource Fair at Bridgewater State University, where they get to display some of the robotics that they had worked on for this UMass event. And on May 18th, from 3 to 6, they'll be a part of that fair at Bridgewater State. So I just want to thank all of our robotics club, and I also want to thank our advisor for doing a great job, is Julie Walker. So I want to thank all of them for continuing to move our robotics club forward and our tech engineering STEM program. We also have an art show that's currently happening over at the library, so if you get a chance, you can see some of our Silver Lake Middle School students. It'll be throughout the month of May. Fifty pieces of art are being shown there. We also have a music festival, Junior Senspa, which was attended in Braintree, and we had 13 students that were accepted into the honors group. And I want to congratulate our Junior Senspa students, Amber Conroy, Addison Durant, Drew Donahue, Magnolia Consolment, Piper Newton, J.J. Kukets, Madeline Dooner, Caleb Lawson, Caitlin Rancourt, Antounas, Laurel Phalas, Madeline Janis, and Carla Ingersoll. Great job at the Junior Senspa. I got two last things. One is the New York City trip's coming up. I just want a quick reminder, and I'll bring back some great pictures of some of the events that the kids are at. I will be attending as well, and that's coming up on the 24th and 25th. So stay tuned. Probably be an exciting trip down to Nine Eleven, down to the island. Very excited about that. And then we also have our Spring Foxer coming up on May 30th and May 31st. That's it for me.
Wonderful. Thank you. And you? Yeah, we're ready.
First, I want to, I want to thank Elliot, did he leave?
Yes.
Okay. He was sticking around for a while. But I want to thank Mr. Glass for, for being here and presenting his CTE advisory committees. It's a yearly piece, usually happens in May, and they do an outstanding job. They meet twice a year, and it's really vital to our CTE program. And I want to thank all the people that were here and attended tonight, they gave up their time to volunteer on that committee, those committees, and a lot of them, as you notice, are teachers at other vocational schools or in the field, and it's important for, for our teachers to meet with them. And it's a kind of a professional development for them in, in sharing of ideas and kind of latest trends in their field. So I want to thank Elliot and the members of the CTE advisory committees for coming out tonight. I also want to say congratulations, and a job will go on to Derek Garland, who presented earlier tonight, and to Caroline Voet, who is here as the CTE Student of the Year. Both of them are outstanding students. I know I said it after Derek presented, and then Kim had mentioned it as well. I want to thank Russ Shute for, you know, donating his time really with the independent study project for Derek. You know, that class is an outstanding class, and there's a curriculum to it, and they do, you know, that's the basis of what Derek built off for his projects, is the curriculum that he went through with the engineering class. But the intricacies, the interviews, the plan itself, everything that was coordinated was really led by Russ Shute, and, you know, obviously followed through by Derek. And, you know, I mentioned earlier, there's 40 independent studies. And I try to highlight, I've tried to highlight one at least last few meetings that you guys can see some of the extra stuff that goes on that's really special. And obviously, we wish we were able to offer more classes and, you know, we would have more staff to do that, but offer more classes so we can kind of touch upon all those types of projects. But I think, you know, it's, we get a lot for what we have at Silver Lake, and the support that you give us is great, and the, and the, and that the communities give us is outstanding, and what our teachers do on a daily basis with the students is outstanding. It's all cyclical, it works together, and the, the product, some of the product you saw tonight, which was, which was really nice. And just so you know, usually, when I get wind of that stuff, I go to them and say, will you come and present? Russ, Russ, Mr. Shute, and Derek came to me and said, can we present this? Because we're really proud of it. And I said, absolutely. That's, that's great. So again, just a little time out of my report to thank those people that were here tonight. Now, I don't have a very long report. Oddly enough, there's not...
Make it up for it.
What's that? Not a ton goes on during this. This is usually a slow meeting for me on reporting. Not that there's any less going on at school, it's just, this is AP testing, this is MCAS testing time, a lot of preparation, a lot of stress. And in the end, when I report to you in October, what the scores are, a lot of success. So the AP exams have been going on since May 1st, they're going to end tomorrow, okay? And those, those students have been, you know, cramming in sessions. Again, another extra thing that our AP teachers do, you know, sitting with the students after school, before school, having those cram sessions to get them prepared, and of course, all the things they've done throughout the year to get prepared for that, for those big exams. MCAS is on Tuesday and Wednesday for math of next week, and then we have another MCAS test on June 6th, 6th and 7th, or 5th and 6th. I get confused. Graduation's June 3rd, which was really the big date, and then Science MCAS is after that. is after that. I did pass out tonight, changes for our proposed handbook changes for next year. Not a ton. You see on the front page, there is a school dress update. And really, that's really a language cleanup update, to be more in line with what we do now. And that part of the handbook hasn't really been touched in the last eight to 10 years. So, that's really an update, and is a little more appealing to read, and a little bit more in line with what we do at Silver Lake. On the back of the sheet, this is already in place in our handbook. This was through our CPR audit. This is the nondiscrimination statement. It's already in our postings that we have up for any job openings. It's already online in our handbook. But when we print the handbook, this will be in there as well. And I felt as though I should just include it because it is a change to our text. So, those are the only two changes this year. Everything else remains the same. So, I did not print a, you know, 62-page document for you to read tonight, nor did I share with you as a PDF. I don't think you need to read through it. You did it last year. So, those are the only two things you really have to look at and vote on. You can wait, if you'd like, till, to approve it to the next meeting, or you can vote it tonight. It's up to you.
Move the changes for the proposed handbook for 2017-18 at the high school.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Perfect. Thank you.
The last time, thank you very much. The last time I presented to you, I gave you an upcoming event, the Spring Play, Robin Hood, took place after we returned from vacation. It was, the setup for this, I went into, Ms. Ferreras here tonight, who was one of the planners of the play, Ms. Orca, so she was also one of the co-directors of the play. And Jenny Lee Berry was the other one as well, involved in it. And Lucary built the sets with the students. But I went into Ms. Ferreras' room, and there was all wooden swords on. And I said, I knew it was for Robin Hood, but she showed me all the nicks and the dents, and that one student had shattered one. And I said, I hope everybody's gonna be okay during the week. She said, it should be fine. Don't worry about it. So, they did an outstanding job. I mean, some of the action shots that you've seen, either posted online, or through Twitter feeds, or Facebook feeds, I mean, it's just, the kids had a blast with it, and it was an outstanding shot. I'm very proud. The Spring Play, you know, we have two huge productions during the year, the Fall Musical and the Spring Play. And both of them are outstanding. The Spring Play has, I really give credit to Jenny Lee Berry, Kim Orca, and Ashley. And not this year, but in the past, Heather Bates and Luke Shry for this year, for really, our Spring Play has really come from something that the kids had put together, that they put in a great effort for over the next, last couple of years, huge productions that have really come a long way. So, I give them all the credit in the world for really, you know, pushing the kids and getting them prepared. They enjoy it so much. It's intense, but it's great, you know? And that's what it should be. That coincided with our Spring Art Show, which took place in the Event foyer outside the auditorium. And on display was an assortment of artwork from our art classes, featured portfolio work, and the portfolio prep, and our major students. And that was put together, organized by Jane Napolitano and Hannah Close, our two art teachers, which is every year. And just, it's great that it coincides with the Spring Play, because you get to see all the talent on display. And we get a good crowd for that as they come in and come in for the play. So, it was really nice. I had my annual senior parent meeting, which is always a shock to the senior parents. I do it on Friday morning, this year, April 28th, and Monday, May 1st. And, you know, that's kind of the last meeting we have. And I kind of prepare them for the last six weeks, going into the final stretch for their seniors. Like I said, AP exam's been going on. We've had MCAS next week, the senior prom. The senior pre-prom assembly is next Thursday at 8:30. Of course, Scanlon will be coming by and speaking to the seniors again. He does an outstanding job. He really is. He really does good work with our seniors and reaches them. That's their pre-prom assembly on that Thursday. The 19th, the senior prom at the Venencia, I think I said that right, in Boston, Julian Dorchester. It's Boston. They'll be traveling by bus. They'll have the red carpet that night. I'll be sending out information to the community regarding that. Senior final exams are the week after, the 22nd through the 25th. And when we come after that, go into Memorial Day weekend, and then when they return, there's graduation practice on May 30th and on June 1st. That's a Tuesday and a Thursday. Practice is 8:30 to 10:30, a reversal. The senior class meeting is on May 31st, where they will receive their yearbooks, the senior breakfast catered by our culinary students, and also receive their caps and gowns and tickets on that day. And the senior awards night, annual senior awards night is on Thursday, June 1st, at 7 o'clock in the auditorium. Graduation is on June 3rd at 11:00 a.m. on Sierra Coke Field. It'll be a beautiful sunny day, and we will be outside enjoying the great weather. I will be wearing a lot of sunblock, and-
Good idea.
Black, yeah?
Yes. Black robe with sunblock. The 7th is our evening of excellence for our underclassmen, the awards night for our underclassmen. And as Mr. Dupiel stated, June 8th is Step Up Day. So.
Can I add something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Michaela Gill, our assistant principal at the high school, is starting something this year, where she has got our seniors, after they get their caps and gowns. And she is organized where the seniors are going to go back to our elementary schools, and walk through the schools with their caps and gowns. And there's a, there's a great, what is it called, Jim?
It's the parade, graduation parade.
Graduation parade. And if you sort of Google it, it is something that is sort of becoming a phenom in schools. And Michaela's really taken the initiative. And it is no easy task to organize all the elementary schools in June amid all the field trips, and to get our seniors there. And I'm really excited, and I can't wait. And I'm hoping we'll have some video to show you in June. But, you know, Michaela's really done a very nice job of organizing that. And I'm really looking forward to it. I think, I think last month, if I remember correctly, Jim had mentioned that some of our students went down and played basketball, KES. And I think you may have read the letter from Paula. And so, you know, it really means a lot to our little guys to see our big guys. For them, they're huge. And so, it's really exciting. And I know the kids will love it, and have a chance to go back and, you know, give high fives to their old teachers. And the kids will be looking up to them. So, it's exciting. I'm really looking forward to it. It'll be a lot of fun.
Thank you, Joy. Some of the logistics to it, it's gonna happen on the Thursday, the last practice day. They already have their caps and gowns. They sign up ahead of time. So, we're, we've already got signup sheets out. There will be, first student, David Heath, has really worked with Michaela. This is something that started in California, and many schools do it. But, first student has donated buses. They're gonna start at the middle school, all of them. Will come here first. And then, students from Kingston will be traveling on the Kingston bus with Mrs. Gill, who's a Kingston resident, down to the KES and KIS.
This is the cutest part.
Halifax will be, Mr. Bled will join them. Mr. Bled is a born and bred Halifax boy. He'll be going down to Halifax Elementary School. And I will be traveling with the kids to the den. And I'll come back to that. Now, also, just so everyone knows, we have Pembroke students in our vocational, in our CTE program. And we have organized that Pembroke students who want to sign up for this as well, will be taken to their elementary school.
Is Mr. Glass going with them?
We wanted Mr. Glass to take the CTE bus, but I don't think he will be doing that. We will be getting them a bus. But he will be going with them. I wanted him to drive.
He's a Pembroke guy, yes.
He is a Pembroke resident, couldn't know that. Makes sense as well. So, and then we'll all be returning here to the high school to finish up. So, it should be, hopefully, the parents were very excited when I talked to them on Friday morning and Monday night. But sometimes, the parent excitement doesn't spill over to what the kids want to do. But hopefully, it works out.
Jim, do you have a time for you?
We end practice at 10:30. So, we're gonna be heading out right before, right around 11:00. Yes. So, once that is finalized, I'll share that with Joy, and she'll share it with you guys as well.
And is that from first, did you say?
Yes.
Great.
Yep.
And if you're having any problem getting kids to sign up, just tell them the bus will go by Mo's afterwards. Favorite hangup.
One more hour of community service. Graduating requirements.
That's great.
It's the thing they do.
Yeah.
Jim, do you need to know who's attending graduation, from the school committee perspective? Do you need to know that?
Yes. So, Karen and Dolly will be sending you out invitations about specifically to the school committee regarding graduations.
Alright.
She'll have a couple of questions in there that, you know, please just get back to her. You don't have to be up on stage, you don't, you know? But we always want to plan ahead for that stuff. So, whatever decision you make, just get back in touch with her and respond to the email she sends out to you.
Thank you. Alrighty, folks. Dave, oh, I'm sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Jim, I don't even mean to put you on the spot, but being the, I try to do it all the time. I'm a parent of a recent graduate, a couple of years ago, who's back home from college right now, and has made a couple of comments about what a great education he got at Silver Lake. And as well as, you know, a couple of suggestions that may come up. Do you have any reach out? I know our email addresses are turned in at the end of the, of their tenure here. Do you have any way to reach out to students? I mean, we're factory, and we produce some very nice products. And thank you very much, and to the staff for doing that. But is there any way to get any input back from our graduates about?
Yeah, we sent out a survey to our recent graduates. I think what we've been talking about, myself and Mr. Garofalo specifically, the guidance director, we've been talking about, like, more of-
Alumni.
We have an alumni group. We have, we have an alumni directory we worked through, and I could something, you know, so many years out. We do send surveys out, not as far out, I think, as what we would like to do. So, it's more of recent graduates who, you know, might still be in that timeframe, or either gone to school, or gone to the military, gone to the workforce, and only a couple of years out, and are still determining what they're going to be doing. I think we would like to coordinate our efforts to send out surveys beyond that three to five-year mark, and even longer, to get some more information and feedback that way. You know, it's an interesting topic you bring up, Mark. I think people talk about that. Principals talk about that a lot, how to reach out, how to get feedback from alumni that are out post that five-year mark. So, that's-
Can they keep their email addresses longer than after graduation? I mean, that might be one way to-
It's a good question. I don't know-
Able to reach out.
I don't know capabilities with that, or ownership. You know, I'd have to talk to the tech department about that. I couldn't answer that, you know?
Well, perhaps have a breakfast or a luncheon or something, this time here, when they're out of school, a lot of them out of college now. High school's out, maybe they'd come by and sit down with your department heads, and maybe, you know, a little roundtable kind of deal, and give you some input.
Well, I do know our, many of our English teachers, just informally, so you know this, I mean, I don't highlight this a lot, but many of our English teachers, and even other parts of our staff, our STEM club, our medical science club have invited many alumni back. We've had tremendous success with having them come back and speak to students about going through the process of schools and jobs. The STEM, the STEM club has really done, Don White and BB Musis, two of our math teachers, have really, really done tremendous work voluntarily, pulling alumni out of here that are in the engineering field, or biomedical field, to talk about. And the best part of it, and I've gone to a couple of these, and they tend to come back around Christmas break, or on the holidays. And we organize, you know, in the library, they'll sit in, and a lot of students will come in. I think a couple of years ago, I had 60 students sitting in there, listening to them. And they said, these were people that were in the engineering field, you know, the STEM areas that are very popular. But they said, you need to, you need to take the highest level English classes that you can. You need to be able to write and communicate, and all the things that, and I, like, I wish I had hit play and heard it, and then could project it out, because, I mean, it's really, it really hit on the points of educating every piece. You know, every piece, or the whole child, and talk about, but all of that. So, I think we've gotten a lot of good feedback about how they were prepared. You know, but I didn't mention, which I should have, today, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we have an outstanding staff, A-Z. But the PTO came in, and they put on a big buffet spread for our teachers down in the teachers lounge. And a couple of parents, you know, parents are working. And one of the, one of the parents said to me, her daughter, Isak Perdue, she's, this woman's a Plimpton resident, and said to me, she goes, I just, she goes, Jim, I gotta tell you, you know, Sarah just thanks you guys so much. She's so prepared. She's doing so well out there. And thank staying, and thank all, you know, thank all the people that have, that have prepared her to be successful. So, I appreciate the feedback we do get back. And I agree with you, Mark. I'd like to set up something that we get more feedback about our programs for people that are further out, that have the life experience to talk, you know, to really speak to that.
We had a student who works for Pixar, who came in and did a presentation, which was fantastic. He was part of The Good Dinosaur, I think, was one of the movies that he worked-
A few years ago, yeah, he came by. He's actually friends with Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. He was just here, who's a huge Disney fan. But, you know, it was, it was really a fantastic presentation. So, we, you're right, we'd like to continue to do that. It's a great way of showing our kids where they can go.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks. Alrighty, folks. Halifax elections this weekend, the 13th, Plimpton Town Meeting the 17th, Plimpton Elections the 20th, Kingston Town Meeting the 23rd, and then some. Memorial Day the 29th, graduation the 3rd, and our next meeting, June 8th. So, could we have a motion to adjourn and executive session?
Not to return.
Not to return?
Good catch.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive sessions for the purposes of negotiations.
We have a special thing we must now do. A special verbiage.
Yep.
You got the lawyer's verbiage?
Yes, yes. Suggestion.
Yep. Okay. So, we make a motion, then we move into executive session to discuss contract negotiation strategy with regard to the Teacher Association collective bargaining pursuant to MGLC 30A S21A3. We will only return to adjourn out of executive session.
Thank you. Well done. Okay. Maureen? Jason?
So impressed by Max Little.
I've practiced it for the last two hours.
You've been all done, yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jim? Me, yes. Thank you.
I get to make all of them.